That will come out of the general fund. Will not affect anything that we're doing from a budget standpoint officially. We offered to accrue our fifth balanced budget with no tax on freeze in a row. We looked at $80,000, just pulling the numbers, based upon the Wilson County Opry. They have a billboard they get income from. They get income from the stock show and rentals. And with that, we're looking at about $80,000 net income. When we looked at expenses, we looked at everything from cleaning expense, insurance, just basic stuff, pest control, repair and maintenance, what they had spent, garbage, gas, electricity, water, and we're looking at about $43,000. And so, from that standpoint, the only expense that's in there personally would probably be under the cleaning expense, which was $12,400, part-time janitor. We're looking at a net cash flow of about $36,000, just for the operation. Potential for the show barn, a number of people have expressed it already, but just in the county, San Antonio and Riverdale, we have meetings with them on a regular basis, and we need a facility. Emergency management, training classes, mitigation for asthma, first aid training, Texas Association of County events that we deal with. Obviously various 4-H opportunities and other opportunities for the county, for example, together, our whole group together. Some of the potential changes, again, is looking at moving the extension service over there. Mr. Talley is right on, from the standpoint of maximizing that farmers and ranchers are more apt to go over there, because they're familiar with their area, and park and visit, and learn things they can do to improve, as opposed to going to the dungeon right over here to me. It gives the county a daily own-site presence over there. We could be more competitive pricing on events. And there's also opportunities for concession leasing. From the standpoint of expenses, again, the only thing, I cut two items slightly from their real expense. One was insurance, because they were providing alcohol, and I got a test month from Mr. Dupree as compared to other areas what we pay. And, let's see, there was insurance, I guess that was the only one, it's not two items. Cut some of the checking into the, yeah. So, from a day-to-day operation, we're okay. Are we gonna be able to recoup on the short-term of our investment in that property? But what I'd like to make to everyone is, I don't know when it was, five years ago, six years ago, we had problems with the courthouse, and we ended up begging. And we bought a school loan. And that's turned out to be a win-win for the county. We now have a district court over there that, yes, that we needed, and we have a library that just won an award for being pretty much top library in the state. That is for the citizens of the county. This is for the kids. We have one of the top 4-H programs in the state, in the entire state, Little Wilson And the statement that was someone made earlier about investing in the kids now or paying for us later, I think that stands true. And I probably mentioned the last time that we met, I guess it was year before last, I got asked to interview a number of 4-H folks that were from this tall to high school. Another commissioner and I were gonna interview them, and I said, "Okay, I'll do it. I'm kinda busy that day, but I'll do it." And the other commissioner didn't show up, and so I had to interview them all, and I thought initially, "Boy, this is just not right." It was one of the best days I've had, from the smallest to the high school senior, top-notch young folks. And that's a lot of what this brings to it. There are a number of things, you know, if I'm looking at this from a business standpoint, and it's hard for me to do that, but if I'm looking at it from a business standpoint, there's lots of opportunity over there. There's things that we can do that will make that facility very competitive, from the standpoint of renting that area out on a regular basis. In long-term, there are moves that could be made from the county that essentially, in my opinion, could add a battle back, or others. Busy every week, I mean, almost 15 to 16 weeks a year, there are far, there's lots of opportunities.
Okay. Those numbers that you presented, Mr. Wally, are just a small fortune to number that, because we're not adding what is gonna cost 200 extension office. You're gonna have to...
No, all I did was look at a cash flow basis of the facility as it is.
And for repair and maintenance, you only have $200,000. There's a lot of maintenance that you don't know that you're gonna do, and that's...
Again, what I did is I looked at their financial statement and pulled the things off of that that I offered. Obviously, there's other improvements that need to be done, and there's some other expenses.
And where is all that money gonna come from if we're only gonna pay 261,000, and then we're gonna add more maintenance to that building? Or we're gonna come back to the commissioner's point and say, "We need more money to improve that 200?" Because what I see right now, it's nice for the kids and everything, and I completely understand, 100% for the kids, but why is it that the stock show committee and the show barn committee has to bring up the commissioner's point for us to support it when they can do this, what you did right here? And say that they can do a profit of $36,000. Why can't they do that instead of bringing it up to the board and to the taxpayers? I mean, that is taxpayers' money that we're gonna be spending, and like a gentleman that they was saying, we gotta use it wisely, because it's gonna cost us, and this is gonna also increase our operation expenses as we go down the line next year. So that increases our operation expenses as well. What we have right now to burn is through a budget balance. Are we gonna increase taxes next year to operate it? I mean, those are things that we have to sit down and maybe take a little bit more time, like they say, table it, and let's do it over more quarters. I mean, those numbers, I mean, they're fine, I mean, you better profit. But there's still a lot of things that are missing right here.
That's not the problem. It's just, it's just a statement of cash flow, is what that is. You know, so we're not looking to make a profit out of it. It's operated for quite a while as it is, and it probably operated quite a while longer as it is. I mean, the building is not falling down.
It's not falling down.
It's been that way for 20 years, the way it is.
It needs repairs, but it's not necessarily current repairs being made now. The history of the show barn in 19, the early 1970s, the Jaxton Company donated the land, and 10 people in Wilson County signed a note with their name, saying that they would be responsible for the money to build and maintain that building out of their own pocket, if not necessarily, but it has transpired over the years, and it's, it has housed the Wilson County community, the Rockstock Show since 1972.
And you know, the commissioner, Wally, was saying five years ago, "Well, we did that wrong for the courthouse and the lair," which was good, the lair, but when I sat down with the financial advisor, the county judge, the county attorney, and everybody, the first thing, the financial advisor told us, "What is the, what the future goals for the county before you just go out there and wanna remodel the courthouse and all this?" I sat down with them and I told them, "Issues are, county goals are the main issues right now." And that got cut away right away. And then animal shelters also got cut away. And there were other needs that the financial advisor, "Before you move forward, make sure you wanna go through, mom, sit down and discuss it directly." So that way you can send it to the people. This is one example right here, the show barn. If we were to sit down and discuss what is the need for the county, maybe the show barn should be really still on that list. And build something better, the district court were trying to put it as a jail, we could have built something better, bigger for the future of the county. Right now, the way I see it, we should buy old buildings, and it's gonna cost the taxpayers more and more money down the line. That's the reason, right now, I would rather sit down and discuss and table it, so that way at least we know how we're gonna spend this money. 261,000, I can understand that they're saying that it's coming out of the general fund and what is gonna go with it. That's the word of the judge, the last commissioner. Now, the county auditor, tell me, 261,000, where is that money coming from, the general fund? Is it money left over, or money that was just sitting there?
The general fund, I think that building out there here.
It does, okay.
It's a circle, okay? We've had a good year, people have improved, the elected officials have run their office, they've improved this year. We're gonna have a surplus of money left over at the end of this year. It's gonna cover 262,000.
Oh, we were, the real budget, or the judge that they sent money?
They sent money. Most, every elected official, you go, usually what our county auditor does, is they go over the money they spent before, spent the year before. Okay, they take, "Okay, mother, we need that much money?" Because you don't go play soccer, you're gonna spend it next year, but you gotta have it covered for, because if you don't play before, then you don't have the tax rate to get that much money out of, okay? Then you will not have the money operating. And then you will be, you will be operating off your fund balance, which we do not do.
I'm just saying, we gotta give this much advice to the taxpayer, so we know how we're gonna spend it, and we don't go out there and buy something, know, and try to make money. If not make money, it's gonna cost us in the long run, save more and more money. Next thing you know, next year, you're gonna come back and say, "Well, we need to do this, we need to do that, that's another $100." That's what happened with the whole county building when we bought it. That was the first thing, we bought it for $200,000, and then we pulled up over $200,000 to remodel that whole building. So that's what we're happy to make out of it. And then it just sitting there, now coming over y'all, and it not benefiting us a lot. We put in more and more money, probably than a month ago, we spent about almost $20,000 on the roof. So that's what I'm saying, that if we're gonna do something, spend the money. That's all my concern for the whole respect.
$600,000 on a roof for 60 seconds. $600,000 on a roof for the, for the jail.
Yeah, but you gotta see that we got further inmates, and more further inmates paid for everything that goes around the corner.
That, that even a bit of a fun.
That's, but it does pay to balance what you do, remember that.
No, he's talking about repairing existing, so... Here's my concerns. We're talking about moving the extension office over there. I talked to Mr. Stadler last week, to try to get some information, make some kind of a proposal. He said they're not out yet, and they will be by the end of December. His tale related to this, and that profit they're talking to isn't quite accurate, because if they were making that profit, they wouldn't be losing money on the verge of having to sell the show.
The profit, the, the numbers I have, no debt service, no debt service. Okay, because that's what their deal is. They were operating, if you take their debt service off, then they could be operating in the black.
Well, we're gonna have to save debt service.
No, we're not, we're not gonna have debt service.
We're gonna have debt service to pay these taxpayers back with this investment, to return on our investment. And that's gonna take 20 or more years. My question is, if we might have, well, if we make whatever $38,000 a year, we don't know, we don't even know what kind of income we're gonna generate. We don't know what it's gonna cost to build the offices, to move the extension office clean up, what it costs, we don't know, except we manage to just be...
This is operating as it is.
Okay, but we're, we're talking about moving entities over there to operate, and they have their office space to operate now, so that's a current other cost. Are we gonna charge it any of these rent? Are we gonna charge that extension office rent to be there? Are we gonna charge middle ownership to be there? And once we, once we get that, every piece of that property's gonna have to be 88,000, how much is that a cost?
It's gonna take 88,000 now.
The front view, okay? I guess that's a lot of ideas. There are a lot of potential expenditures, we're gonna have to invest to do whatever we wanna do with this, and we have no idea what they are. Let's find, let's, let's do a real business plan. Let's find out what all the expenses are gonna be. Is it worthy of college? Yes. Does it benefit the youth of the county? Some of them. It's not benefiting the football, baseball, soccer, tennis, volleyball, all that. It's one special interest. We understand that, it's a great cost, but I grant my pity for it. But let's make sure we spend this money wisely. We, we can't just say, "Okay, well, we can make a lot of revenue from ripping out it." How? Show me how. Let's, let's just, let's do this right.
Okay, that I, to mention, and I'm not saying there, where would you get your information? If, if their information's not correct, where would you get your, how do you know? How do you go to rent it now?
That's where you, that's where you form a committee, you come up with, he writes some ideas on how we're gonna market this, how we're gonna re-grant. I talked to Mr. Rattrick, he went out with the committee, went to the facility, walked through it, because he was the one interested in buying the condition. But when he talked to him and found out that it wasn't making any money, that the capital expenditure to improve it, or needs to be, to be very successful, be cost competitive, so he decided not to purchase.
Did he ask for the purchase?
Well, no, he, he was gonna approach it, he approached it, and said, "Did he ask for any more information?"
This gentleman can stand. Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Way. I was a past president of the Stock Show Association, and listened to all this discussion. I did not get to see, listen to all the information of Mr. Wally stepped out. However, something that has not been addressed is a lot of the information with regards to the financial report from the show barn, is they don't have to report a lot of information because we had a nonprofit organization. Here again, this young lady said something about the sale of barn needs to be sold to another nonprofit, according to nonprofit rules.
Transfer.
Transfer. Okay, I'm not condoning the sale, purchase by y'all or not. Still thought it was a good idea, because 40, 8 years ago, I presented this idea to another judge and another commissioner, other commissioners at the time. However, nothing has been realized here that we pay a large amount of money to the show barn on an annual basis for rent, and it's not $1,500 a day, or however the period is. At one point, four years, we spent over, paid them over $100,000 for improvements on the property, and all the improvements went to the banquet hall. It did not go to the back barns. The back barn, that is the newest back barn, the stock show paid for that in its entirety, and gave the money to the show barn to pay for. However, all that money did not get accounted towards that building. Additional debt was incurred by them, and now they have additional debt of $260,000 that was assumed by some of us in the community to be paid by the Farmers Built Opry Association. So what I'm asking y'all is, yes, y'all need to do your diligent research before you enter into this activity. And as it is, that we, we are and will continue to rent that facility from whomever it is. But I understand that Mr. Riker, in my opinion, should not have been even allowed to purchase the property, because he is not a nonprofit company.
He didn't consider, and he wanted to see the happen.
He shouldn't even consider, he shouldn't even have been on the consideration. Now, the show barn, I mean, the stock show committee might be a consideration, I'm not, there's a lot of directors here besides myself, which I've been a director for 31 years.
I think that'd be a good option for y'all, the secret party to have, and joining forces.
There's a problem with that, not from our standpoint. Okay? So anyhow, I just want to let you know that we will continue to pay rents on that place, and it's been, they're anywhere from $12,000 to $25,000 that we have put into that facility for renting it for the time period that the show exists. And there's a lot of good kids that have grown up through the 4-H and FFA programs that were not on the streets, and not in jail, and have gone on to be successful individuals in the community and other parts of the state of Texas, going through that program. Keep that in mind, thank you.
Thank you. One thing, I mean, that it is a super risky investment, you're getting it for approximately a third of what it's worth for.
Well, if you were to care about selling, yeah, I would agree with that. If you don't care about selling, you'd do that.
Well, it would, it would be an option to say, if we thought we could operate it. And I wouldn't, that, that would be an option, so keep us from going forward for the whole, okay? And let's reconsider, and...
But that, that would eliminate the stock show right there.
But that's, and that's what I don't wanna do, but that is, that would be an option. People look at all that it is, you...
Yeah, I just want to bring a comment, I made a comment, last commission's court meeting. Yeah, I'm involved out there also, but I look at this not only for the 4-H or FFA or for the kids, I look at this as a multi-purpose facility. We have a lot of senior adults that have no place to go right now. And we, I feel like we need to be obligated to have some place for these senior citizens to go, like they used to go down here and play bingo on a daily basis, Monday through Friday. There's no place now for that to happen. We need a place for these people to go. Yeah, that's gonna cost taxpayers money, yeah, it could cost us some money, but this, these are the people that made this county. And also, we need to look at the city, I mean, the juniors, the young kids, a place for them to go. It's not just livestock, it's archery, it's cooking, it's welding. Again, we have one of the greatest 4-H clubs in the home state of Texas, and yet we wanna turn our eyes on these people? We need to look forward to it, because that's gonna be our future generation. And also, the extension service can use this for the, the future education that they use for the farmers and ranchers out there. Now they have to go to the civic center and pay to use the place. This could be a place for our taxpayers to have a place, your local. And then I know somebody asked, or commented about the civic center, I don't wanna be in competition with the civic center. That's had its own purpose, it does a great job out there. We wanna do something different, in my personal opinion. And I appreciate everybody's comments that they made, and I understand their comments. But I just think this is a great opportunity. Well, I know there was some talk back, we did the courthouse and the, and the school loan that they're buying, I have to agree with Commissioner Wally, I think it's the greatest thing we've done. Yeah, we could have gone and built a new facility, but it was gonna cost us over $20,000 million dollars. That's what the architect told us. Was that wisely? I don't think so. And, and I would still feel this is a great opportunity for the county, and for the people of this community. And I'll go ahead, and I made a motion last time, and I'll make a motion this time, I'm totally in favor of this opportunity.
Well, I would like to, I agree with everything you said, I think it's a good opportunity to be used for obvious purposes. But let's know the numbers before we vote.
Again, Commissioner, I'm not so much worried about the numbers. When we started the collection facility, we weren't worried about the numbers. When we built the library and the district courtroom, we weren't worried about the numbers. We're not here as a business, we're here to provide a service to the public.
Yeah, probably, that's, that's another problem.
Exactly, that's another problem. When do we look at numbers of what, how much money are we gonna bring in when we supply the sheriff department? Are we due to go to bridge? No.
Yes, we, we worry about road and bridge problems. We always argue about the money.
Right, you're gonna use it to go to bridge, we all want to, this year.
You wanna raise taxes.
Exactly, wanna raise that. We're not even proof of a road and bridge.
The problem is, Paul, that with that barn now, we have a loan for 20 years.
Exactly.
To pay for it. Now we can't even show up on taxes because of that loan.
We can't.
But we could have done much better than what we're doing. That was the whole problem that we had.
We could go up on taxes.
There's taxes, there's the taxes, send it to the taxpayers.
But I'm just saying, we could.
But we, they can survive till December, I'm saying, we've got that number one, we need more research, and, 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 let's have a business plan, see what services we would provide, and I would, I would, I would understand what to do there. Let's, let's have a, very refreshing, warm focus. We'll have to sell that, and I was told they could survive until December, and give this more than two weeks that we do here. Right, I don't know, the plan, which we did, we came up with a few numbers, and a lot of guy, bad ideas, but nothing solid, definitely. Let's, let's tighten this up, without leaving the best of the end. But let's do this right.
Or when you get the numbers, I mean, there's no, there's no guarantees as to what the numbers that he gave, right? And there's no guarantees to what numbers that you're gonna come up with are gonna be, I mean.
That's how businesses...
Well, not like this though. I think, I think, I agree with almost everybody you said. But I feel that we need to go forward. If you're, if you're going back and looking at it as a business deal, you look at it and you say, "Okay, here's, here's some numbers, I understand that, here's the investment, here's the value, here's what we can do." I think we need to go forward, and I'm gonna second that motion, to go forward. And, but we need to do everything you're talking about. We, we know what is capable of now. We know what it has done, and I think that we can do better right there. Now, everything else that you're, that you're talking about, are we gonna move the ag extension route over there immediately? Are we gonna move it all? I think that's part of the business plan that we have, once we, once we do this. But I think from the standpoint of kids, you know, the growth of the county, where the gentleman back, who, who had moved here and, and thought we were gonna grow a lot more, he's absolutely correct. Whenever I ran for office back in the 1800s, it went to the rose. That was one of the things that really stood out to me, because I had been involved in putting together a strategic plan for one regional hospital in Cee-ee, and I, when I was doing the numbers as a citizen, was that I realized that, one, Wilson County was the second biggest customer, and just how much this county had grown, and how much it was growing. And then when I did my projections with, they had to help to provide their $100 million loan, I saw how much it was gonna grow yet. And to me, you know, I suspect for my family, my family was here before this was counted in 1860. So this is important to me, but we have to look toward where we're going, so that we maximize the county, and we have to look toward where we've been. It's a marriage of the two of them that will keep this county really special, and when you look at ag, and when you look at that gonna pay, that's an important part of the county.
I agree.
And, and I'm not gonna sit here and put that in there, so again, I second. A motion by Commissioner Bob.
I second my Commissioner Bob. So I'll take the, the functions are a jury. A place to have a function may be a jury, but not the organization itself. I mean, they could have it in Laverne or, or anywhere else.
If you take their, take the place away that they're organizing, they're, they're, it's gonna go by the waste pipe. There's, if you don't have a place to have something?
Well, what about Laverne? They have their own there.
I don't think that their, Laverne is a lot smaller than Wilson County, and they're outgrowing their facility.
The county might, might, this facility wouldn't affect the organization. So, let's, let's know what this is gonna cost, this is potentially gonna cost us, and how we can market it for the money, to sell funds. Because right now, we have a balanced budget, and next year, something we gotta do with this, we have to pull, give the waste taxes, pull funds for other requirements, funds. departments, funds, animal control, we're desperate, we have a better communication system for all animals, I mean, to me, that's a more of a priority than this here, which benefits the entire county. Not that this is a worthy cause, but.